This meeting of Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I think it would be appropriate to have a moment of silence for yet another school shooting. So if we can remember the victims, those who died and those who were injured in the Santa Fei, Texas, school shootings. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal, here. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Here.
Mr. Sancker?
Here.
Mr. Breeden?
Present.
All members are present. I have some requests to amend the agenda. I would like to propose that we move the introductory reading of resolutions for celebrating the life of Helen M. Jasper's to next on the agenda before any other business transpires. And then to remove the public hearings that were sent out with the notice. Those are scheduled for the next meeting on June the 12th. So those are the only amendments that I believe that I would propose to make to the agenda. It's your pleasure. Mr. Sancker?
I make a motion that the agenda be amended as stated.
Seconded by Mrs. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. So we will move on to introductory readings of resolutions. We have some members of Helen's family here. Would you like to come up front? Here? I know. You all didn't know you were going to do this, did you? What is your pleasure? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we have suspended the rolls and have all three readings of the resolution.
And the first one in its entirety, perhaps?
I think that'd be appropriate.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings, the first in its entirety.
Resolution celebrating the life of Helen M. Jasper's and declaring May 22, 2018, Helen M. Jasper's Day. Whereas Helen M. Jasper's was a longtime Norwood resident, having moved to Norwood in 1964, and was the devoted wife of the late Richard J. Jasper's. And whereas Helen M. Jasper's was the mother of 13 children, grandmother to 34 grandchildren, and great-grandmother to 12 great-grandchildren. And whereas Helen M. Jasper's served in the City of Norwood Health Department for a quarter of a century, from 1978 until her retirement in 2003. And whereas Helen M. Jasper's expressed a true compassion and kindness to the citizens of Norwood, especially the financially less fortunate and homeless, earning the nickname by her colleagues as the Mother Teresa of Norwood, delivering food, sewing clothing, driving those who didn't have transportation to medical appointments, and many other acts of kindness and selfless generosity. And whereas Helen M. Jasper's spent countless hours being active in the Holy Trinity Church St. Vincent de Paul Society, Norwood Food Closet, and the Norwood Community/Senior Center. And whereas council, the administration, and all citizens of the City of Norwood wish to celebrate the life of Helen M. Jasper's and honor her for her dedication to the city, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio, that's Section 1. This resolution celebrates the life of Helen M. Jasper's and remembers her selfless generosity in improving the City of Norwood and lives of its citizens. Her dedication, passion, love, and pride for the City of Norwood was limitless, and she will be dearly missed. This council, administration, and the citizens of Norwood further recognize her family for fulfilling her final wish, which was to remain in her Norwood home until she passed. It took the help of each family member and those who loved her to give back to her what she so generously gave to others. Section 2, this resolution designates May 22, 2018, as Helen M. Jasper's Day. Resolution celebrating the life of Helen M. Jasper's and declaring May 22, 2018, Helen M. Jasper's Day. Resolution celebrating the life of Helen M. Jasper's and declaring May 22, 2018, Helen M. Jasper's Day.
Mr. Sancker?
Madam President, I would recommend that the resolution be approved and copies made and distributed to the family members.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker?
Well, yeah, I would like to say I apologize for only having five hours left today for you guys to go kick your heels up in memory of Helen. But that's still plenty of time, I'm sure. She was, as most people remember, no bigger than a minute, but had a heart as big as gold. And we'll never forget her for her service to the city, the church, the community, and especially her family. So thanks for everything. She'll be remembered.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Helen was my mentor. She, when I was asked to become a public health nurse, I said I couldn't think of one good reason why. And Helen gave me a whole multitude of reasons why. And then taught me how to be a nurse in them. When the board asked me to become health commissioner, she said, "Oh, darling, you'll be good. I'll help you." And then two years later, she retired. So, you know. She was an amazing person, and it's difficult to not have her here. But I wanted to make sure that you all were recognized for all of the care that you gave her. She had tremendous care from your family, and that doesn't happen very often, which speaks volumes to the way that you all were raised. I heard at the funeral that they got their sensitivity from their father and their determination from their mother because she was the one that...
Yeah, she was the tough one.
Yeah. So we appreciate it very much. I have one framed copy. I have 13 other copies for you. So I know everybody couldn't even hear, but we wanted to make sure that you're... Thank you. You're welcome. Say words if you want to, if not, it's fine.
Thanks, ma'am.
In your prayer, welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for coming. I know there's a lot going on this time of year, so we appreciate that. All right, we have minutes from two different meetings. The April 10 meeting, there were three different versions, my understanding. We have version one, that was an original from Mr. Gears. There is a version two that was distributed that had some changes submitted by Ms. Stevenson and Mrs. Hanahan. And then there was a third set that Mr. Bonzal had made comments and changes in as well. So I'm open to whatever, whichever, however, we're going to resolve this. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. Before we go there, I might be wrong. Did we vote on the resolution?
Did we pass? Did we vote to pass? Norwood, I don't know, is so emotional, we might not have.
No, we made the motion, but never...
We never passed. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes.
So before we do this, let's... The motion on the floor is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. We'll move on to the minutes, as we stated before. So what's your pleasure? How will we resolve this? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So I would move that we would pass the original minutes that the clerk of council distributed to us for this meeting.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Clark? Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
I might sound like I'm yelling, but I know the air is on.
Yeah.
I don't know if people are watching in the room. Might be able to hear me. When this was on the agenda last session for our regular meeting, I had the opportunity to chair, and I found it very confusing to know how to handle this. When I reflected back on voting yes to Mrs. Hanahan's request to clarify some things, I made so, under the assumption that she wanted to clarify our own comments. And so when I started reading the revisions, I personally was concerned because I felt like we don't have a process that I'm aware of for interpretation. And so I wanted to ask council to consider, maybe we need to add more detail to our rules of council so that we're not delayed two meetings approving minutes that, I mean, given the topics, residents and the public might need our minutes faster. So I just felt like that was an outage as president pro tem in terms of supporting council. I was at a loss for direction to try and discern, are we just going to be discussing in order to get to what we call final or not? So I just wanted to offer that as a point of discussion around what we do with the minutes.
Comments? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you. Yes, I did ask for this to be changed because I think my responsibility as a council person is to approve minutes that I think are correct and are clear and transparent. So that is the reason I asked for them to be changed. And if we go ahead and vote on the first one, I'm going to vote no because I don't think that it was clear.
Thank you, Ms. Hanahan. Any other discussion? Mr. Thompson, you look concerned.
Trying to think how I want to word this.
I understand.
It seems to me, just to cut to the chases, is at eyes with what was specifically said during the council meeting and how that was then represented within the minutes. Am I correct in assuming that's the issue at...
Yes.
I don't know if there's protocol for this, but we record these for posterity. Anybody can go look at any council meeting that they want to and review for themselves. Why not just, in quotes, put the bit of dialogue or whatever that was in question within the minutes? Footnote it saying that there was discussion about how this should be represented within the minutes and call it a day and just say what was said.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So when we look back at, I've been on council now, I think we've had 30 meetings.
Can you like pull it towards you so we can hear you? It's just hard with the mic, with the air conditioning on.
So in the two years that I've been on council, I went back and looked at many of the minutes, and never once in the minutes has there ever been direct quotes from people during a conversation. I mean, the minutes usually summarize what happened at the meeting. You know, we... There was a request made at the meeting that there would be an attempt to, you know, clarify things that happened at that meeting. And talking to the clerk of council, you know, after this, when the revision that Mrs. Hanahan, you know, ended up essentially writing came out, I asked him, "Do you, you know, are these minutes that you agree with? Do you agree that the minutes that Mrs. Hanahan put out are minutes that you would endorse if you were writing them yourselves?" And, you know, I don't, not to put words there, but I don't think that this is traditionally how the minutes are written. Anything that was said at the meeting is recorded on YouTube. I mean, it's, like Mr. Thompson said, it's always out there. I mean, if somebody wants to use something I said in a political attack ad, which frankly I think is what is trying to go on here, they can already do that anyways.
Yeah. We're not going to get into... Please, let's not get into...
I appreciate that. Sorry. I apologize there. But so the words are already out there said. So, I mean, frankly, I think the original minutes, you know, are the most objective of any version of the minutes. But I do agree with Mrs. Stevenson as well that there needs to be a process in place because basically the way that I was told was that anything that, you know, everything that the clerk of council didn't want to add, he felt obligated to add because we said that he would work with Marilyn to get the things clarified. And so I just frankly want to echo Mrs. Stevenson's comments that I think there should be more discussion before just presenting a updated final version of the minutes for us to consider in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Sancker?
Yes, Madam President. I had commented to the clerk of council as well, in referencing what Mr. Bonzal had mentioned about, you know, the quotations. And I did say to the clerk, I said, "Well, then take the quotations out." I mean, if that, as mentioned, you know, I don't recall having specific quotes. So I said, "Take the quotations out if that's, you know, would make the minutes, you know, pass." Because as you stated, you know, without going back verbatim and, you know, things I say, sometimes I stumble around it. If you put it in writing, sometimes what I say, people will look at it and probably say, "What the hell's you talking about?" But so I do think that, you know, as had been done versus necessarily, you know, firm quotations may be a way to resolve things. But if there is a different process that we want to look at down in the future, we could. I guess it would come down to how much time do we want the clerk to spend, you know, on the minutes? Or, you know, do we want everything to be, you know, done word by word? So that's what we would have to consider. As I had stated to the clerk earlier, you know, a couple weeks back, and then take their quotes out if that makes everybody, you know, we can move forward. So that was just my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Sancker. Mr. Thompson?
Just to clarify what I had said earlier, I'm not suggesting that putting things in quotes is the way that we should always be doing things. I'm just stating merely in this particular instance where we've gone back and forth, back and forth on the way that we should record this for posterity, that in order to move beyond this, that just maybe that was a way that we could do that. But I'm not, I don't mean to suggest that we should be taking even more detailed minutes. I think our minutes are pretty good.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Sancker?
Just clarification from Mr. Thompson. So you basically, for the set of minutes for tonight, we would have footnoted the additional section added to the minutes along with the original ones? Is that what you were thinking?
I was thinking more specifically you would either footnote the direct quote if that was a, you know, leave the minutes as they are, but then footnote it with, you know, this is what was specifically said and was issued in the meeting. Because honestly, I think that we should also record that there was an issue with the accuracy of the minutes. So I thought footnoting it might be a way to do that. But I'm just trying to throw out possible solutions here so we can get past April the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I have no problem taking out the quotations, the quotation marks. I have already told Mr. Gears that when I heard there was a problem with, that people felt quoting people was a problem. I agree. Go ahead, and if you want to take the quotation marks out, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan.
Footnotes are fine, too.
I might suggest that Mr. Gears and I meet with the law department to find out maybe a way to see exactly how we need to resolve this in the future, exactly how much detail there needs to be in a process whereby people can comment what needs to be done or...
Correct.
I think that's something that you and I can sit down with the law department and figure out for future minutes. Hopefully, this doesn't happen again. But we need to resolve it. We need to figure out how to do it correctly. Mrs. Hanahan?
I agree. Thank you, Madam President. Luckily, this does not happen often. I don't know why there's an issue with having it come out, quite honestly, the way it was said. And even when you look at the third, you know, you can look at the one, the third one that's submitted, it's, I will say, there are things that did not happen, that were put in the third one. It just wasn't said that way. So I would just like to make that clear also.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other discussion? Mr. Breeden?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. When you meet with Mr. Moore in the law department, I'd like to know what they think about the quotes and as far as the clerk quoting, and what they have to say about that exactly. So if you could put that in.
Thank you. We'll add that to our notes. Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. I wanted to just remind everybody, if you haven't already, there's online training around public meetings and public records, and it does provide some guidance around what note taking can look like, whether that's your personal notes or notes of the meeting. One thing that I was reminded of as I was preparing last week is that there is case law that suggests as long as the action is captured, the level of detail doesn't have to be granular like quotes.
Correct.
And so if you haven't taken that training, we're only required to once during our term of service, or if it's been a while since you've taken it, I just want to encourage everybody that's out there for our own accountability, to our roles as elected officials. I also wanted to suggest for the meeting with the law department, maybe mirroring something like the cover sheet for our ordinances and resolutions where requests can be summarized, and then just a quick, like, this is the thing I'm trying to clarify, could be shared out as an opportunity to help create some process. But again, just like the reader, I think it might be helpful for us and future councils to have something like that added to the rules of council.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Is there any other discussion? So to be clear, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes that were originally distributed, I'm going to call version one, that were originally distributed by Mr. Gears. Okay? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
No.
Mr. Sancker?
No.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
So by a vote of four to three, the motion carries. So the other two are moot, since those were the set of minutes that were approved. We do have the minutes from the May 8 meeting, which were distributed by email, and then a slight change made a little later on this afternoon. Did everyone get that change? Okay. Is there... What is your pleasure with the May 8 minutes? Mr. Clark?
Move to approve the minutes as a friend.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do not have the public hearings. We have no request to address council on nor reports of standing committees, so we'll move on to the third reading of resolutions. And it's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Great Lakes Recycling, Inc., DBA, Simple Recycling. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we have the third reading of the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the third reading.
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Great Lakes Recycling, Inc., DBA, Simple
Mr. Clark?
Move to pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker?
Yes, Madam President. Reading through the agreement, I mean, it all kind of makes sense, but I did have one question, I don't know whether Mr. Bonzal will be able to answer, but when they talk about distributing the containers for people to utilize and then put those out on their regular garbage day, the container actually is specified as a bag. My question would be, if we use the bag today and they come pick it up tomorrow, where do they put bag number two if I'm going to do it again next week? Are they going to come every week like our regular pickup? I know they did say about having some meetings for clarification on some things in there as well once this is approved, but I guess the question was, how do they redistribute the containers for multiple uses?
Mr. Bonzal, can you help us with that?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam President. It's a great question. So when, once they pick up a bag, they'll actually tie your replacement bags onto the handle of your garbage can. So it'll be there. And if there's no garbage can in front of the house at that point, then I think they'll just tie it on the doorknob of the house with the bag sitting in front of it.
So I thought I heard you say if there's no garbage can, that they'll tie it to your doorknob of your house?
Yes, yes.
Again, great timing for the air conditioning to go on.
Good question.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Is there any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Stevenson?
I'm looking forward to having this service very much. I was doing some spring cleaning, and I thought these things were qualified, but not yet. So I'm just glad that we have this new addition.
I have a few things saved up myself, yes. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We move on to second reading of ordinances. The first one is an ordinance creating the retiree benefit program as amended. Mr. Thompson?
Move that we have a second reading of the ordinance creating the retiree benefit program.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? I will relate to you that I had a conversation today with Mayor Williams. He had some concerns about passing this and the VIBA, the next two, because apparently there's been some confusion. Some people have received a letter saying that their benefits are, they're no longer covered under the plan, and there's some uneasiness going on. And he is in some discussions with Anna Mary about clarifying that this will go through, the plan will go, the current plan will go through the end of this calendar year, and that we as a city will be responsible for any of those bills that are incurred during that period of time. I think he wants that clarified. He's very nervous about that. He had originally asked us to maybe remove it from the agenda, but we can have the second reading. We have three weeks in between to our next meeting. It's my hope, he is hoping that both he and myself as president of the council and Mr. Bonzal as chairman of finance committee can meet with renovations to try to get some resolution to what's going on with people being paid, not being paid, how much is owed, all that kind of stuff. So it's my intention that this is going to happen. I think that you all want this to happen, but he wants to make sure that all of that information is clarified. information is clarified, and if we have to bring Benavation to council, we can do that as well. But, so that's totally up to you. Ms. Stevenson.
Yes, thank you. Can you clarify who sent the letters?
I'm assuming Benavation did.
Sent letters to current?
Some people, not all of them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, this is just discussion. It's not, nobody knows anything, but the, any letter that they would send out before any termination of coverage, the city of Norwood would have to notify our carriers that we are no longer going to be utilizing you as our carrier.
Yeah, correct.
So I mean, there really should technically not have anything gone out on behalf of the city.
That's correct.
Unless Benavations has an issue with the individuals, or if there were things that timing-wise don't fall into place, that could be another issue. But as far as Benavations or any of the other plans that we currently have, until we would so note them that we are terminating our policy with you, we should continue on as usual. And as you said, in each one of these things, it states the third, first.
Exactly. So it's just, he's waiting on clarification from Anna Mary and April, whether it's considered debt. It is going to be debt that we owe people, because this plan is in effect until, clearly on all of these, it says December 31st, 2018. And this new plan hopefully will go into effect January 1st, but there's some clarification that may need to be done. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask if you could ask them to come to council. I think-
I would be happy to.
There needs to be, I think the retirees need to be here. They're not getting paid. I'm getting calls on a regular basis. I'm getting bills from people, sending them to me, asking me what's going on, and I can't get them to return my calls. And I think it would be wonderful, just for transparency, because we all know what's going on here, well, many of us know what's going on here, to have them here and answer the questions, not just from us, but maybe it's a committee of the whole meeting where residents can be here, but have council here also, or just council. I guess you don't want to muddy the waters too much. I think they need to be here to answer. I would also like to know and ask, I don't think I can do this now, ask Mr. Gears to send Mr. Stitt a letter. I'd like to know how much we've paid Benavations for administering this program over the past 10 years, or for however long they've been doing it, since 2000, I believe.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you.
So any other discussion? The motion on the floor then is to have the second reading of this ordinance. Call the roll, please. As amended.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second reading.
Ordinance creating the retiree benefit program as amended.
Next is an ordinance repealing ordinance 66-2000 as amended, which provided for health care insurance for retirees, employees who are no longer employed with the city due to disability, and employees who had completed a cumulative total of 20 years of honorable service and declaring an emergency. Mr. Clark.
Move that we have the second reading of this ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second reading.
Ordinance repealing ordinance 66-2000 as amended, which provided for health care insurance for retirees, employees who are no longer employed with the city due to disability, and employees who had completed a cumulative total of 20 years of honorable service and declaring an emergency.
Next is ordinance number three, an ordinance terminating the VIBA plan and trust agreement and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we have the second reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second reading.
Ordinance terminating VIBA plan and trust agreement and declaring an emergency.
We will move on to introductory readings of ordinances. The first is an ordinance authorizing the mayor or service safety director to sign letter approving assignment of community reinvestment area agreement with the Urology Group Real Estate Holding Company, LLC, and declaring an emergency. There is a representative from the Urology Group here, if you have questions on that. And there was a clarification from the Law Department that was sent to you all. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. So I would move that we have all three readings of the ordinance, and invite the gentleman up to answer any questions.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Would you like to come up and address us? If you'll give us your name and address and... Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. My name is Dan Scharf, and I'm the chief financial officer and general counsel for the Urology Group and the Urology Group Real Estate Holding Company. We thank you for your consideration this evening. One thing I do want to say before anybody asks any questions is the Urology Group is not going anywhere. We're staying in the community. We're happy to be in Norwood. We've received great support from the city. For 22 years, we've been in the community, and we plan to stay. What we're really talking about here is just a financing transaction that would involve a sale and a leaseback of our current real estate. Again, we're not going anywhere. Nobody wants to buy that building if we're not the tenants, so we're going to be part of the community. Were there any other, I just jumped in and made some comments-
No, great, thank you.
But I'm happy to answer questions.
Does anyone have questions? Mr. Thompson.
I understand it's a sale and a leaseback. Could you just give a summary of really what that is?
Well, actually, currently, the operating company, the Urology Group, is leasing the real estate from an affiliated company, the Urology Group Real Estate Holding Company. So really, what we're really, that company is going to sell the property to an unrelated party. The lease terms will remain largely the same. We're entering into a 10-year lease with two five-year options to renew. We plan to be here for a long time. We built a wonderful building. We're in a great location. But that's really, the terms that would be largely the same, it's just the rent checks are going to go to somebody else, and we don't have to pay the mortgage payments.
Gotcha. Thank you. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I was just curious with the building, do you know, like, just a rough percentage of how much of that building is office space, like, you know, almost like corporate employees versus medical office space, whereas they're like seeing patients?
In really rough approximate terms, about two-thirds of it is devoted to medical, and about one-third of it is devoted to office.
That's a pretty specialized building, then, so.
Yes. And the first floor is the, is where we have our surgery center. It is the largest urologic outpatient surgery center in the country, both as far as the floor space, operating rooms, and volume of cases. But it's a very specialized building, and again, as I said before, nobody wants to buy the building if we don't want to continue to be the ten.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to say thank you for coming tonight, and Norwood appreciates having you here also, the whole company.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. You do echo our sentiments. Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you. So the motion on the floor then is to suspend the rolls and have all three readings. Call the roll, please.
We did.
You did? Oh, yes, that's right. You suspended them, and we let him come up. Now we're ready. Oh, I'm having a bad night. I'm sorry.
Now I have all three.
You haven't read it yet.
Correct.
Go.
All right. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or service safety director to sign letter approving assignment of community reinvestment area agreement with the Urology Group Real Estate Holding Company, LLC, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or service safety director to sign letter approving assignment of community reinvestment area agreement with the Urology Group Real Estate Holding Company, LLC, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or service safety director to sign letter approving assignment of community reinvestment area agreement with the Urology Group Real Estate Holding Company, LLC, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor or service safety director to sign letter approving assignment of community reinvestment area agreement with the Urology Group Real Estate Holding Company, LLC, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We are finished.
Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scharf. Okay. We've already dealt with the resolution. We have no administration reports nor other requests to address council. Is there any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. So just as kind of related to the, well, just to begin to reiterate, we have a public hearing at the June 12th meeting for the 2019 tax budget. Mr. Stitt has been working on that. He's going to put just a proposed version, he has to put a proposed version online two weeks ahead of time, so I think he's going to do it sometime this weekend. We'll have a finance committee meeting at some point next week. I'm working on just seeing his availability, and then I'll check with the finance committee members to see what, you know, what might work for us. But basically, the tax budgets, it's very easy this year, because it's basically going to mirror the financial recovery plan, except for just a few, like, technical areas. So all of the work that we did earlier is going to make this a lot easier, because it's just going to say exactly what was already in the plan. So again, that will be online this weekend, and we'll have that finance committee meeting next week.
Great. And you'll announce that meeting once you have a date set?
Yes. It will be sent to the clerk of council, and then they will send a notice out to the sunshine list. And just so anybody at home, if you want to get like a notice whenever council has committee meetings or has our council meeting, and you'll get a copy of the agenda, just reach out to the clerk of council's office. I think the number's 458-4594, and they will add your email address to it so that you can be notified. And so you'll get notified of when exactly that meeting is.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I'm going to phrase this as part of a question as well, but am I assuming that on Monday, Memorial Day, that the American Legion will be having their Memorial Day presentation at Victory Park at 1:00? Or do you know if that's not happening this year?
I know that it is happening, and I'm not certain of the time. And I only know that because I ran into someone from the American Legion last week, and I thought she said 11:00, but I have not heard officially.
Okay.
I will double-check with them, and normally, the sergeant contacts us, and I have not heard from him. But I will certainly double-check with the American Legion tomorrow, and maybe we can have the clerk's office send out a notice. Mr. Sankar's talking about the Memorial Day observance up at Victory Park. It's always very moving, nice memorial. So I will verify that and let you know.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other new business? Just want to remind everybody about the playground build that we're going to be doing on June the 2nd. It's down at Northwoods Park, sponsored by Sensig Children's and La Mega Radio. We've got lots of volunteers, and found out we got donuts now, too, so if nothing else, you can come and eat very well. Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you. About the playground build, do you have enough volunteers for the whole day?
Um, you know, if there are lots, if there are, I don't know that you could ever have too many. So if there are lots of people, we can divide up into different groups and do different things. Not only do we have to do the playground build, but we're going to install curbs, the big black metal, uh, black plastic curbs all the way around, all of the playground equipment down there. Mulch needs to be moved and put into those areas, so even the ones where there are currently playground equipment. So there's lots of work to do. I don't think anybody will be turned away. We, getting down to the nitty-gritty, the children's hospital was saying, is there a water supply down there? And, yeah, for the concrete, or do we need to have a concrete truck? I was like, you don't need a concrete truck. There's water down there. We can put hoses together. And then, very nicely, Mr. DeLuca called and said he had talked to his cousin, and they're going, he's going to let us use his water, which is right next to the park. So it's all coming together, and Mr. DeLuca from Beto's offered to bring donuts and coffee. So we'll have food in the morning and lunch in the afternoon, so hopefully, lots of volunteers, we can get it knocked out pretty quickly. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. Who was bringing, is there a company that was bringing lunch, I guess, that afternoon?
The people that are, Julie Peters from The Mound, India Mound Cafe, offered to make barbecue, and coleslaw, and macaroni and cheese. Klosterman Bakery is donating the buns, and they're giving us some kind of special buns that they make for some barbecue place, I don't know. So, nice buns. La Rosa's across the street is going to send up pizzas. So it's really a community effort. Children's has been very impressed by what's gone on in the Norwood community. Everything that she throws at me, we've got taken care of already, or the solution comes quickly. So it's going to be one of the easier playground builds, I think. Andy Bolts, who is a resident of Norwood, is going to be playing music, and that's volunteer. Nobody's, he's not being paid. All of this is done with, being done with volunteer labor, so a real community effort, and really want to applaud the community for coming together. There are people who don't live here anymore, who said, I remember growing up as a child, and I want to come back and give back. And so people who don't even live here anymore are coming back. There are a couple people who said, we're going to come in memory of our friend who used to, we used to go down there and play, and she just recently passed away. So three or four of her friends are going to come and help rebuild the park, and they're even talking about maybe getting a plaque or something somewhere down there to see, to memorialize her. So a real community effort. Really do appreciate that. Any other new business? Okay. We'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from the Ohio Liquor Control regarding a liquor, new liquor license for 2631 Edmondson Road. This is for a new license, and objections must be mailed, it may have to be postmarked no later than June the 8th. Letters were sent out to all of the departments. We did get back from the fire department and the tax department, who had no objections. Mr. Braden.
Sure, I'd like to request that the letter be received.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding Mayor's Court fines, report for April 2018.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of April 2018. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, I was requesting the letter be received.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no absent members to excuse. Please excuse me for my emotional, not getting it together tonight. Helen was a special person, so I'll get it together from here on out. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clark. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
No.
By a vote of six to one, I caught that. The motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.